Let's get the work session started. We'll call, Kelly, please.
All right. Mr. Bozen?
Here.
Mr. Nichols?
Yeah.
Mr. Amos?
Here.
Mr. Childs?
Here.
Mr. Brighter?
Yeah.
Ms. Wilder?
Here.
And Mr. Prince?
Here. Can I get a motion, please?
Mayor Protem.
Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda and the approval of the minutes for the February 21st, 2022 work session as proposed.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. First up, we have Randy with the discussion of the biofuel projects.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. This afternoon, we want to have some discussion on renewable natural gas. This is a discussion that we actually kind of started a couple of years ago. We kind of tabled it at the time because they're just, the markets kind of changed and it didn't really look very favorable at that time for us to keep moving. Since then, the market has changed and we've had some renewed interest. So we brought Strand and Associates in today. Randy Wertz will be the speaker that'll be kind of going over kind of where we're at and kind of lead the presentation this afternoon. And then when we get done, we can follow up with questions after that.
Good afternoon. It's a pleasure to be here. I'm Randy Wertz with Strand Associates. Excuse me. We've been working with the city mostly at the wastewater treatment plant for probably six years now, since, I think, 2016. So nice to be here in front of you. So what we're talking about today is an opportunity for the city. It's something that should be considered. It's not something you have to do. So just keep that in mind as we talk through all this. This is an opportunity for the city. I'm talking about biogas reuse at both the wastewater treatment plant and at your lagoon that treats Tyson Foods wastewater. So we're going to start at the treatment plant here. The screen shows a picture of your treatment plant on the right. You produce biogas at this plant, about 250,000 cubic feet per day. This is what's considered high value gas, and I'm not going to get into the regulatory side of it, but all of the gas produced at your treatment plant is high value. Most of it is right now flared, so it's just burned. You don't get any value out of it. It has to be burned because you have an air permit. You can't just put the gas into the atmosphere for greenhouse gas emission reasons. So you're using about 40% of that to heat some of the processes at the plant. The rest of it is just flared and wasted. To reuse this gas as a renewable product, cleaning up, putting into the pipeline, it's about a $7.5 million capital project. So it's not free. It's an expensive process. There are plants doing this, so we can talk more about that if you have questions about that. At the lagoon, now this lagoon is off-site. All of the wastewater from Tyson Foods factory comes into this lagoon. You produce gas right at that lagoon, so it's way off-site. And it's a lot more gas. It's about 800,000 cubic feet per day of gas. It's lower value gas because it comes from an industrial source. Again, not getting into the regulatory side of it, but it is all lower value, but there's a lot more of it. All of that gas is currently being flared, so there's no value at all gained from production of that gas. It could be cleaned and reused. Because it's a much larger volume, it has a capital cost of about 12 million to clean that up and use it. The other thing I wanted to point out on the lagoon side of things is it's a really critical piece to your wastewater treatment plant puzzle here in town. Without that lagoon, your treatment plant itself would be in a lot of trouble because of the huge loadings from Tyson Foods. So just keep that in mind. There are some upgrades needed at the lagoon. One being the cover shown on the bottom right-hand picture there. That needs to be replaced. It has about a 15-year life on it typically. There's already holes in it and things like that, so it does need to be replaced. And there's a lot of solids accumulated in that lagoon that needs to be cleaned out. Estimates of about $3.5 million to do that work. That needs to be done really regardless of what you do with the gas. Doesn't need to be done today, but probably within the next five years, that should be done.
Mr. Mayor Protem, real quick, is that 12 million for the lagoon project also including the 3 million for that replacement? Or are those separate costs?
That is not included in that. The 12 million is for the gas side of it.
Okay.
I think one of the slides up here shows that a little bit better. So the previous, if we go back a couple of years, we were talking about the same thing. We were actually hired in 2019 to do an assessment of this gas and figure out what the best way to use it was and to kind of put a concept design on paper. So we were hired at that time for about $80,000. We got maybe two months into the effort and the city decided to table it. And so that contract is still sitting there. The money is still available. There's about 70,000 left on that contract. So those funds are available, as I'll mention here in a little bit, but that project was halted because of the market conditions at this time. There's a couple of things that have changed since then. One, the market has improved. And two, there are other entities involved that might make it a very low-risk proposition for the city. And that's what we're talking about, partly what we're talking about today. And I always get ahead of myself, but the current conditions, so we've been tracking these markets very carefully. The markets are at an all-time high right now for this gas and have been for about 12 months. Actually, probably even longer than that, maybe 18 months. So they're marketable, they're favorable, and again, there's now third-party ownership models where a company will come in, build the facility, take most of the profit, but give the city a fairly sizable revenue stream just for you giving them the gas to use. So that's what we're talking about right now. What that does is it gives you some, or it gives you a very, very quick payback because you don't have an upfront capital cost. You get some revenue out of it and it's very, very low risk. So this third-party opportunity, there's a lot of entities out there now that are doing this, some large, some small. City of Dubuque, just for an example, they're doing this both at their wastewater plant and at the landfill. They have third-party contracts in both of those where they don't own any of the facilities. They just get a revenue stream from this operation. So the third-party would design, build it, own it, and operate it. It'd be hands-off from the city. They may pay your guys or your employees to do minor maintenance on it. At the other facilities that do this, they just keep track of their time and the company reimburses them for any time that's spent on their equipment. This third-party would market the gas. There's a lot of money that needs to be spent if you do this on marketing the gas. Where are you going to sell it? Who's essentially brokering the deals? So they would do all that and they would own the gas rights to the facility. The city would just receive a percentage of their revenue. This is typically anywhere from about, I'll say, 5% up to 20% of the revenue, of the net revenue that they would receive. So you'll see, we'll go through some costs here in a little bit, and it's typically a 10-up to 20-year contract that they'd like to sign. So this is a current financial outlook. I don't know if, can you see my cursor up there? I just want to make sure we're all looking at the same thing. So this on the, oops, of course. I'm not going to try to do that. So on the left-hand side is city-owned. So it says city-owned up top. So those at the treatment plant and at the lagoon, it shows you the gas quantities that you're dealing with there. The capital costs, you see now I have 15.5 million there. That's that 12 million plus the three and a half. So that's where that comes in. The annual gross revenue is the next line down. So if, this is if the city was building it, the city is spending essentially $23 million to build both of these facilities. You get all the rights to the gas, you get all the revenue from the gas. Your annual gross revenue from that is between 2.3 to 3.5 at each facility, so those are cumulative or those are additive. So your actual net revenue would be about $6 million from these two facilities. Your annual O&amp;M expenses right there are showing about 1.5 million. And then if you subtract those two, you're at about $4 million total revenue that you could get this after you pay for the expenses. If you are, so as I mentioned, the city revenue from the treatment plant is about 1.7, from the lagoon is about 2.5 million. And then we indicated debt service. So if you take a loan out through the Clean Water Fund loan in the state, that's your net revenue or your debt service on those two projects. So it's about 1.4 million. So even after you pay for all the debt on this, all the annual expenses, the net revenue, net excess revenue after everything's paid for is about 2.7 million per year. That's an estimate right now.
Mr. Mayor Protem, I had a question.
Go ahead.
Okay. Looking at this, as far as the city-owned side of this, you're saying that 1.7 to 2.497, and then the debt service that you're talking about in the green there, that amount. Now, I know that there's operating costs and all those things, paying people to maintain all these different things. Does that in the green show that or is that, will that be?
So if you go up, it says annual O&amp;M expenses. That's where those costs are included. That's where they're subtracted out. So again, these are estimates. The bottom green line is what we believe is a clear and free number. You paid for everything. You paid for the debt on it on an annual basis. That's the amount we believe would be left over to do with what you want.
Mr. Mayor Protem.
Go ahead.
So that green number is per year on the bottom, correct?
The green line?
The excess revenue is that per year?
Per year, yes.
Okay. All right. I have questions from Michelle afterwards. Okay, thank you. Mayor Protem, so my question would be, thank you. My question would be on this is, the city-owned, we take all the risk. When I say take all the risk, because the market's high right now. And we hope the market stays high, but if the market doesn't stay high, we assume that risk.
Absolutely.
And we're not going to be making the money that that shows right there, correct?
That's absolutely correct.
Whereas on the third-party ownership, we have no risk.
That's correct.
Whatsoever, because we won't be making debt-level payments of 20-some million dollars. We'll just be receiving revenue.
That's right.
That would, that hopefully would be earmarked strictly for the sewer fund and work that we need to do out there and continue to upgrade our, the lagoon and our sewer plant and that, correct?
That's absolutely correct.
Okay, thank you. That's the thing that concerns me is the fluctuation in the market.
That is the exact concern that everybody has, and that's the reason you don't see every plant doing this, because there is a risk to it. First of all, you have to be of certain size to get it done and to have it make sense, and you guys are of that size. The second thing is it's a market, and like every market, it can and will go up and down. And there is a huge risk to you building it yourselves. City of Des Moines just built their own, not city, it's Des Moines Water Reclamation Authority. Sioux Falls is building their own. There's a few others that are considering it right now. It works in Des Moines because they're like four times bigger than you guys are in terms of gas production. So it's almost a slam dunk for them to do it. Even if the market were to go down, it would still be valuable to them. It would be a good use of their gas. You guys would not be in that situation. If the market tanked, you'd be in a difficult position.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
So what I'm hearing then is we don't take any of the risk. We take a few. So we don't have to do really anything except what we need to do anyway to our lagoon. And is the, is other cities doing the same thing going to impact our market? So if there are significant amounts of cities decide to do this, does that, will that affect this market?
Well, that's a great, great intuitive question. If everybody did it, yes, that could, you know, obviously there'd be more supply. And certainly the demand of these credits right now on the renewable energy market is very high, which is what's driving the costs up. I'll say this, that renewable energy market, I do have other presentations. I don't think it's probably, you know, what we want to go through now, but there are markets or there are drivers out there right now that aren't being met and aren't being close to being met in terms of where they want the program to be, where the federal government wants the program to be. And so they, every year establish a renewable volume that they want to be produced, and every year they fall short. So there's a big market still available. Again, 10 years from now, who knows? 20 years from now, who knows? That's too far to project, but I don't think there are too many people that believe the renewable energy, at least in today's world, is going to go away. It's, you know, something that everybody's trying to move forward. I shouldn't say everybody, because that's not real, but a lot of people are moving towards.
Another question that I had is, is I heard you say that the lagoon out there, within five years, the cover is going to have to be replaced. So if a third-party was to take over that, and this before that five-year period, would they be the ones who covered the cost of that cover or is the city going to be still responsible for that?
So actually, you can do it either way. The way we presented it up here on the screen is we assume the city would pay for that. I think that's probably the right way to do it. However, you could negotiate a contract with them where they would do it and they would just get paid for it. So you'd end up paying for it either way. So they'd give you less of a percentage of the revenue, at least until those assets were paid off. Now, they, yeah, you could do it either way. I think the right thing to do for the city, it's your asset. I think the city should actually do that to make sure it's done the way you want it to be done.
Randy, you're in agreement with that, right?
Yep. So I just wanted to touch base on the right-hand side of this chart. Again, there's several companies out there. We've seen a lot of different ways that they share revenue. We use an assumed 20% net revenue sharing. I don't think you're going to get better than that, but I'm confident you can get that amount of revenue sharing. Again, it's the same two things at the treatment plant and at the lagoon. I'm not going to go over into detail, but if you look down at the, in the green line now, the net revenue after everything is paid for is obviously a lot different. It's a lot less, but again, there's very, very little risk. And the very right-hand column assumes the city is paying for that $3.5 million project through debt that they took out at a cost of about 214,000 a year on the debt. So that's how we've approached it right now. But again, if the city decided to go with the third-party company doing it, it would just change the numbers. After a 20-year period, your net would probably be very similar.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Just for the people that don't necessarily understand, can you explain, I mean, I understand the amount of revenue that it'll bring to Waterloo, but can you explain how it will impact our city if we go forward with something like this?
Well, it is mostly a financial benefit to the city, so it should help stabilize rates. It should help pay for capital projects. It's certainly revenue that you don't have today. The other thing is, you know, again, I don't know exactly what, I'll say, sustainable initiatives the city has. A lot of communities are using things like this to tout their, you know, greenhouse gas emission reductions. If it's being used, essentially what we're doing is we're converting it to natural gas and putting it into the pipeline. So every cubic foot of natural gas you put in the pipeline that's renewable is another cubic foot you don't have to pump out of the ground somewhere. So it's a net benefit to the greenhouse gas emissions that this community is emitting, producing, however you want to look at it. And in fact, this type of treatment or this type of gas reuse has been shown, if you look worldwide, it has the lowest carbon footprint compared to almost anything, any other way you could reuse the gas.
Thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Bozen.
Quick question, because eventually we're, I see us not being able to flare the gas. I mean, sooner or later, the government's going to come back and say, because we're putting so much in the atmosphere.
Yeah.
Is that, do you foresee that in the future?
I have never heard that before. That's, I can't imagine that's going to happen in the next 10 to 20 years.
Okay.
Because I've just never heard that said before. Doesn't mean it couldn't be said. There's a lot of things that hadn't been said 10 years ago that are now realities.
I just, I'm worried about down the road that if we get into a position where we can't flare it or we get into a position where we have maintenance issues where we can't flare it, what are we going to do?
Sure.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor, please.
So back up at the top, we had mentioned that currently biogas is being used to heat the digesters at the wastewater treatment plant. Is that something we're going to continue to use or are we planning on finding a new avenue to do that, a new way to do that?
Great question. So this gas is worth so much more than what natural gas out of the pipeline is worth because of the environmental side of it. More than likely, you would just buy natural gas and heat your digesters. You wouldn't have to change anything out with the boilers at the plant. They can use natural gas or they can use biogas. It's almost the same thing. So you would take all of this gas and sell it on the market because it's worth about 10 times what it is to buy natural gas out of the pipeline. So then you'd just buy natural gas out of the pipeline. You'd have a small cost for that. All of those numbers are in this already. So we've factored all of those things in, and it's just a better, it's a better value to do it that way. Much better value.
Are there any current federal grants with the infrastructure package or anything right now?
So the way it looks like Iowa and most states are going to manage the money that states are being given is that there will be grants available, not just for this type of project, but for almost any project. We haven't heard yet exactly how you're going to get in line for it and who's going to be qualified and who's not. Likely it'll have to do with median household income. It almost always does. The last time we did a program like this was 12 years ago, the ARA money. Most states had a 10% to 20% grant component for most of their loans. So we're expecting something like that. I have heard in Iowa that they might have up to a 50% grant match, which would be phenomenal, but I just, we don't know for sure if that's going to happen.
Right. Counsel?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Brighter?
So I really like this plan. From a sustainability aspect, the city, a couple of years ago, stated that we would be carbon neutral by 2050, so I think this gets us fairly significantly towards achieving that goal. It gives us another revenue source. I personally like the third-party low-risk option, but I really think this is something that we should look at.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Childs.
Do we have a timeframe?
Why don't I go to the next slide? So the next steps, the companies that we've talked to, none of them are going to rely on everything that we've done in the past. They'd like to do a study now to figure out where you're at today with the market. So the next steps, if you want to do something, would be to fund a project, to essentially use the funds that were already authorized in 2019 to better define where you're at today. Better update these costs. All of these costs are two or three years old, and we've just updated them for inflation. We all know inflation's been kind of crazy lately and probably not slowing down, so we'd like to do a better job of estimating what the costs are and what the value is on the revenue side. So what we'd like to do is take the money that's there and finish that project in today's dollars, in today's environment. And that's anywhere from about a four- to six-month process to do that. So in 2022, you'd be to a place where you could start negotiating with a third-party.
So Mr. Childs, several years ago, in the grand scheme of things, we had taken a look at this option and we got some preliminary numbers and didn't seem like the market was in the best place for us to be able to do this. So now as time had come on, it seems like this is feasible to do now, but we wanted to make sure that the data was accurate, that, yes, it's incredible to capture, but we don't want to do it at a loss to the city. So this may be the best time to be able to do that. So hoping to use some of the data we had before, update that and then have that as a source of communication for companies or however we decide to move forward in the future.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Would that require council action to, for that 70,000 that's left, just since we stopped it?
Sort of have to come before you.
Okay.
Mr. Amos?
That's basically what I was going to ask, Mr. Mayor. Was there going to be an additional cost as far as to the city for this study?
I think there's money, there's money that's currently in there. We utilize that, too.
So yeah, kind of going back, like I said, we stopped this a couple of years ago. So it'd be something that we'd have to work on towards funding it, but yes, we already kind of have a contract. We'd like to update that so that way, hopefully next year, we could go out for an RFP to move forward. Or here in the near future, I should say.
It's really a good time right now. I think I just paid $95 for, thank you guys, so.
Well, you can join me.
Or $95,000 for the car. All right. Anything else for these gentlemen?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. It is 410. Where's Noel at? Oh, they came in together. One of them is smiling.
Thanks, Noel. Wow, this is some big paper. Use legal size 11 by 17.
Poster size.
John, this totally goes against the Tesla, huh?
Yes.
She won't, she won't be here, no. All right, it's time for our 410 work session, discussion of capital improvement plan and progress we made thus far. Mr. Noel Anderson.
Hi, Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. So the handout I just gave you is our standard sheets that departments fill out. This is a summary of the sheet, so they'll actually fill out a one-page information on each project that kind of goes through the details of the project, if it's a single-year project, multi-year project, et cetera. The sheet in front of you, the summary page on the front, kind of talks about each of the departments. You can see that 25.612 million was requested this year from all the departments. As you can see, there's a lot of needs out there for the city of Waterloo. As Michelle noted at a previous budget discussion, our goal was 10 million for the year. So you can see going from what the department's request, just for fiscal year '23, we have some work to do ahead of us, which we begun doing at this time. Some of the things that we look at in trying to get from the 25.6 million down to 10 million is prioritizing the projects. We look at projects that are underway or committed through some means, either through a development agreement, through some kind of a grant. We look for projects that are federal or state mandates that were required to do and the timeframe that we're required to do those in. We look for repairs and maintenance needed on capital projects. If the pools break down and we have to do some immediate repairs, that's obviously a priority to get funds to do that. We do look at matching funds for projects that are out there, whether it's MPO funds, REAP funds, which are different grant sources through the state, traffic safety funds, gaming funds, et cetera. So we're always trying to look at how we can utilize the city's funds to gain other outside source funds and do bigger projects for the least amount of money. Projects prioritized by departments. So after we go through and we will be sending out a recommendation to you and the council to look at as to how to get down to the 10 million. Once that is decided, then the departments, and I'll use Paul since he's sitting here as an example. If Paul was given $1 million for his department to do projects on his individual project sheet, as you look through here, you'll see that each of the departments ranks their projects by priority. So once Paul would get his number, he may say, hey, this project, which I had prioritized as number one, I actually have number four as our number-one project. Now, he can actually change around the funds as long as he doesn't go over that million-dollar amount, because he may have more updated information since we started this process a couple of months back. So the department heads are still given some abilities in there to kind of change things around in case. needs have changed, priorities have changed. Um, and then obviously we're always looking for input from the mayor and council and as you're talking to community members. Um, though honestly, the easiest way, if you have a specific project or something that you wanna see move ahead, is to work with that department to make sure that they are prioritizing that to move ahead as well as informing us. Um, that way the department head knows this is something that you want so they can try to make it happen. And then if you let us know as well, we can try to steer funds that way if we can. But, um, at this point, we have met with all the departments. Um, you'll see on the summary page, there's some departments that did not request funds or, uh, in, in the example of code enforcement, they actually received funds from a different source other than the bonds. So they're generally a zero on, on this sheet. But we have met with all the departments, gone over their projects to try to understand them. So then we also look at if, uh, if Paul, sorry, Paul, um, had a project and he said, hey, I need, I need a million dollars for this project, but we also know that it's gonna take time to design it. We will try to break out the funds to say, hey, you need $200,000 next year to design it, then $800,000 the next year to build it. So we'll try to break out the various projects over the multi-years of the CIP. Trying to think of, uh, that's probably the best example is really just design and then, and then construction. Um, sometimes there's multi-phased projects, then we have to try and figure out the best way to phase those as well, um, to, to keep them moving ahead. Um, but at this point, like I said, we have met with all the departments, gone over that. So we've tried to understand that. So we know how fast the, the bonds will be spent, which of those can be moved into another year and still meet the timeline that they may, may need to meet for a mandate or something of that nature. Um, and then we are basically trying to get down to that $10 million amount and make a recommendation to, to you and the mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Quick, quick question, Noel. Could you just take like the capital equipment and vehicles and just go across that whole line and just explain the line to us? Because, you know, you got FY '22 CIP, then below it says FY '23, requested FY '24. Could you just, just, just so that we could, we get a baseline for everything we look at from?
So, capital equipment and vehicles at the top there says approved in fiscal year 22. So that means last year's CIP when we were doing that. We basically, we basically tried to do out the entire five years, um, at the bonded amount and try to figure out what's the priorities as best we can, knowing that priorities can change year to year. So at that point, we had 864,000 identified that if we wanted to hit that, I remember we were at eight or 10 million for the next year at that point. That's what we would've given them to be at that magic point. Um, then you can see for fiscal year 23, they requested, uh, 2.3 million roughly. Um, the approval is, is what we're working on now. Um, there's no TIF taxable bonds or gaming requests in the capital equipment and vehicles. So sometimes the amounts in there, if we know that there's a gaming fund or grant. Then it goes into the fiscal year 22, again, CIP. There's what it showed for fiscal year, uh, 23. And then here's what they requested for fiscal year 24, and then it just goes on from there. So it'll basically say, here's what the previous CIP showed for that year. And then here's what they're requesting in their updated forms.
So when it says fiscal year 22 CIP, fiscal year 23, 648,000, requested 2.398 million, but then on fiscal year 24, it says, it only has 754,000.
Correct. So that's what we had in, in terms of, again, trying to be at like an eight or 10 million dollar limit for each year. Here's what we thought we could give that department, knowing that when, once we get to that year, that may be able to change because there may be a bigger project somewhere else that either didn't happen or came in with better bids, or we got a grant for that and now we can put more toward that.
So we, so they've already penciled out to 25 that they want 2.33 million?
Correct.
And then 26, 2.6 million. Have we, have we ever considered in the CIP process that instead of breaking things out over five years, that we fund X amount of projects 100% that, that we can fund as opposed to, because I, I remember like the, the vehicle building for the Waterloo Police Department and that was broke up over years. You know, until, until we got the money that we needed to build it and then we didn't build it because we worked out with Salvation Army and then we ended up having some leftover CIP money. But instead of dragging that project out for three years of partial funding, that we just decided to say, you know what? We're gonna fund it all this year and just be done with it. Or, you know, Leisure Services has, uh, a, a big project and instead of breaking it up over five years and paying on that, that bond money over that five-year period, that we just funded all at once. Have we ever given that consideration?
We certainly try to do that when we can. Um, but we also try to be realistic as to what can be spent in a given year. Um, so again, if, if you had two projects and they each needed a million, let's say the one is ready to go. So we try to fund that one a million. The next project is for a million, but in reality, they have to design it the first year and they won't actually start construction till the second year. We may break it out to 200,000 and 800,000 for that second year. So we're trying to be realistic as to, I mean, I, I think all the departments really wanna see their projects happen. It's just things take time, either for construction or to get the materials here nowadays with, with the pandemic and all the, the slows. But also design work is a big, is a big effort there. Sometimes it's acquisitions for, you know, bridges that take longer than we'd like. Um, so there's, we, we try to fund them as much as we can, Dave, all at one time. But we also try to figure out how do we keep multiple projects going and what can realistically be spent in a year.
Uh, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Mr. Amos.
Noel, I'm just looking here at this summary page and I'm just gonna pull Leisure Services again since you did. And I look here and I see the 260,000 and then for fiscal year 23, for mayor, 637. Then I go to the sheet back here and I'm looking at the different things here within the rank. On the ranking, everything that I see is high. So from that standpoint, he makes a decision as far as what is priority.
Um, I, I would say ultimately Paul, in his presentation to us, kinda talking about what his priority is and sharing that with, with the mayor and council. And, but ultimately Paul is the one that, um, would move the money around at the end of the day. So if we send a recommendation back and we said, hey, we're gonna give you a million dollars for irrigation control systems, just to be silly. He could obviously say, okay, I don't need a million dollars there. So I'm gonna move it and put 100,000 here, 100,000 here, 100,000 here, et cetera, as long as he stays within that number that we gave him.
Yeah. And within some departments too, there's a, a, a level of expertise that's needed and has to be known. When you're talking about, uh, whether it's flood control, when you're talking about things that are absolutely about to break down that me or some of us may not have any awareness of, uh, they bring some of that background into what the overall, uh, needs are as well. So the, the, the goal is to get to a point one day where we can just go ahead and do the whole 26 million and not even worry about it. Um, but, uh, it is them trying to help identify at least portions of what's their, uh, priorities to help, uh, get us there. Mr. Childs.
So when we allocate funds through CIP, we essentially give a chunk of money to a particular department? Okay.
Yes.
That's it.
I mean, it's, it's sold and Michelle can go into that if you want further explanation, but it, the bonds are all sold with descriptions to them. So they have to be used for that purpose.
Mr. Mayor.
I'll go ahead. Sorry.
Yes.
And the bonds that you speak of, is that what these, these amounts are like for the fiscal year 2022, 20, or 24, 25? Is that what the bond amount is then?
Correct. Michelle will sell them in, I think, June. Um, and it'll be for, let's say we end up at 10 million. She'll sell $10 million worth of bonds. The council will approve that and all that, but it'll have a breakout of what those bond purposes are.
Are you, do you mean, are we paying for 24 now? Is that kinda what?
No, I guess my question was because a lot of, a lot of the numbers are predetermined. And so I was trying to figure out what, what factors that predetermined number and how can you get those numbers to go down?
Right.
Or, you know what I mean?
Yeah. So, so what, so, so the CIP, uh, and I know you've, you've already, uh, been through this part, but it's basically a, a five-year roadmap. And so their estimates on, uh, what they believe would, would, um, be the actual cost. And so some of them work directly with consultants, some of them work with, uh, rental car places enterprise. Some of them work with vendors and try to come up with what they believe, uh, those actual costs associated will be. And you're right though, uh, the goal is to have that number, uh, decreased by then. But unfortunately in this market and, uh, with our gas prices now and other things happening, those prices, um, it'd be great if those prices stayed instead of actually increased, uh, over the course of time. But yeah, anywhere where we can find best practices, whether, uh, Chris is having conversations with Al over at the county, uh, for shared, shared opportunities, but any of those types of opportunities, we're always kinda looking for them to decrease some of these costs.
Thank you.
Mr. Bozen.
Noel, what we've had in the past and what I don't see today is previous five years, what money's sitting in different funds? Can we get a copy of that?
Yes. Yep. That's updated monthly, um, the, the bond balance sheet, so weekly.
I hope so.
I must not look at it very much. Um, no.
And then under community develop, uh, community planning and development where you've got 1.2, 900,000, 1.1. What do you use your money for?
So the community planning development money that's requested here, um, is essentially for, um, our work in the Wrath area with the Crystal Project, for that acquisition and how we plan that out. Um, there's some money in there for the Van De Wall, um, use or consulting for the downtown plan. And we only have three purposes in ours, um, requests. And then the third one is for, um, demo funds or housing funds. So we, we put those two bond uses together. Good news is if we can get someone to rehab it, we'll use it for housing assistance. The bad news is if we can't get someone to rehab it or it's so far gone, we use it to demo.
And the reason I ask is because I saw Wrath had 600,000 in the TIF when I got, when I looked back through here.
Correct.
So, but let's say, uh, we got someone that's building three or four 12plexes by southeast corner of Kimball and, and Ridgeway. And they've applied for tax credits through the state. Part of that tax credit through the state was an, is, uh, an investment by the city. And my understanding is probably gonna be $5,000 per unit. So where is that 240,000 in here?
That would come in the, under the planning and development one, I think we requested, was it 400,000 this year? And we do try to track those to see what's coming. Remember, they don't get the assistance until the project's done. So from the time they, uh, go for it, it's probably eight to nine months, possibly a year depending upon.
It might be in the next fiscal year.
Slows, yep. So generally we, we have a good idea of what's coming for the fiscal year.
A perfect example would be like Sixcom, 70 units. Does that qualify for $5,000 a unit?
We did not have that in the original development agreement because it had, um, a larger amount of TIFs than the standard, um, like Kura or Clura. So we did not have that included in the development agreement.
Although that development agreement did clearly state that we were gonna give them 75% tax abatements because they weren't asking for the workforce credits.
The last one did. They are requesting the workforce. This time they weren't eligible for, to, to go after it a couple of months back because there's a small section of the site in the flood plain. So we have to apply for a clomer. They do have to apply for a clomer. So they will be applying for that, at which time we'll be recommending going back to the original development agreement that included the workforce, uh, tax credits, which I think they're at 42%.
So we don't have to worry about $350,000 for $5,000 per unit for 70?
For Sixcom.
Right. Okay. Good. I was, I'm glad to hear that.
And to, to Mr. Bozen's point and to Noel's conversation and just the total conversation. And when we take a look at our strategic goals at 2030, um, these dollars will help have an impact on housing. Uh, whether it is, you know, you have a house, I think we talked earlier, have a house, a list of houses that need to be, uh, demolished. And so, you know, we probably don't have all the money for all the houses. So that's when we go back in, we prioritize for this year because there's only so much money, um, to demolish a certain amount of houses and then keep moving with some of the economic development initiatives that we have for, uh, partnering with a Hawkeye or, uh, partnering with the Habitat or, you know, $5,000, um, per infill lot or opportunity. So, uh, have to use a number of different sources to be able to try to accommodate all those requests, but also move our strategic initiatives, uh, forward as well.
Can I ask you a question, sir?
Sir.
So how would, how would that, if we have to, let's go 10 million this year, let's say we can, and then we have to limit it to $6 million the next five years to, to not increase our debt service levy on our taxes? How's that gonna, I mean, we're figuring this about 10,000, or 10 million a year across the board, correct? With these requests? But we could very easily be at 6 million if, if this council chose not to increase our debt service levy to the point where it's gonna raise our taxes just for the debt service levy.
We, we will certainly be looking at that in terms of the outer years, showing them at a 10 million a year, 8 million a year and a 6 million a year. Just cursory view, I guess, because again, it doesn't really matter till we get to that year because things always change. But at least it would give us an idea of the differences in what projects you would see and not see.
That'd be good.
Yeah. And, and, and that's why it's, it's the great catch 22, right? Because, um, we know that we need to continue, uh, to build new houses. We need to continue to work with developers to be able to do that, to put some, some good taxable value on. Some of these infill lots, take down some of these, some of this blight, which we all have, um, people in the community and neighbors and citizens that, get that out of my, get that out of my, uh, my, from next door to my house. Uh, they want that. But yeah, it's just a, a careful balance because you, you take that down and you're able to put some good taxable value on there that didn't exist. A, a perfect example, uh, when we go back to the, the Hawkeye situation where we had some blighted properties. We were able to get those and get those demolished and Tom knows full well too, we were able to get those demolished and, uh, work with Mr. Welpert in Hawkeye. I think we've seen a 140, 140 and about $170,000, which equates to what? Uh, 500, 400,000 dollars of worth of investment now. But, you know, when we take a look at, you know, how much we spend, uh, for this capital improvement. So it does help increase our overall, uh, taxable values. It does help increase what we can pay for this. But it's a, a risk and a reward, or a, a reward and a risk at the same time as well. Cause we have to build it. We have to remove blight. Uh, we have to get, uh, police cars and fire trucks. We have to do a number of those things. So, uh, this is the fun part about, uh, the decisions that we make every day.
Well, the mayor, myself and, and some others just went to the Home Builders Association Annual Conference for Cedar Valley and they had a, a developer come talk from the Des Moines area. Um, he built about 330 units, I think, in the Des Moines area last year. So, but it was very interesting. He talked about how do they reduce the price of land because how do you keep costs down for the affordability range? You know, they, he, he talked about, you can build the single-family houses that cost this much. You can build the 12, 12plexes that, that way people can rent them for here, he says, but what we all need to hit is that middle part. And it's about trying to create affordable housing. He talked about the idea of lots being smaller but being next to public spaces, you know, and we have projects like that. So we, I mean, a lot of the things he talked about with land prices and trying to, to do infill, um, where possible to save on infrastructure costs. These are all things that we're working on. So it was a very, I guess, enlightening, um, listening to him talk about that when we're trying to do all those things here, um, to create that affordable housing. And the mayor had a great video.
Just quick question. So then the amount for like, for community planning and development under demolition projects, that $200,000, is that already allocated for houses to be demolished? Or is that for projects that we would request this year?
So last year we had it at 200,000 in last year's CIP and then this year we are requesting 600,000 um, because we are seeing an increase in, um, some of the housing infill projects that we'll use for that part of it. And then we are seeing, um, some larger demolitions that we have out there, either larger houses or some commercial buildings or anticipation of getting some more, um, 657A blighted houses.
So there's still room there in this amount to do that?
Correct. I don't have the bond sheet with me now, um, but we, we have some available bonds right now. And of course we have an asbestos abatement, asbestos testing contract out and we're, as soon as we get through those, we'll go through another demolition contract.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Childs, uh, and then, and Mr. Bozen.
I just, I just wanted to, to, to bring up the, the, we, we wanna build the neighborhoods from within and, and, but we also need to keep in mind when we're budget-wise, is that when we build a new house and then we won't see taxes for four years.
That's true, but Randy, but Randy will be happy because you have somebody using his sewer service. Water, Water Works will be happy because, uh, people are buying Mid-America. I mean, hey, that's a private, so, so.
And we do see revenue from them.
And then, and we also see, you know, was, uh, we also see, um, buildings being built downtown. Jessica's smiling a little bit more because people are patronizing, uh, some of the businesses. So you're right. Um, we want, uh, those folks staying here. We want them, uh, in our school systems. We want them, uh, shopping throughout the community. So you're right. It is, it is, um, it's a return. It's a return and sometimes it's delayed. Uh, but maybe if we had more data on those houses that are coming online would be pretty good, wouldn't it?
I'd, I'd like to see that because like I say, we, we got that information from billing permits from July 1st until now. And it's like 6.3 million dollars of, of new construction for houses.
Right.
But once again, this, we, we won't realize it for four years after they're built, but they- But then, I would like to, if there was a way that the county could let us know what's coming online.
Yeah.
I mean, they can give us an idea of what's in KIRA, and it's like 55 million the last time I talked to them. But they can't give me an idea because they're only taxing an empty lot. Am I correct, Noel?
Correct.
Okay.
Mr. Childs?
That actually answered my question there, so.
All right, any other, oh, it's 4:35 now. Very good discussion, lot of priorities.
Like I said, just to end, I mean, if there's a specific project you want to see move ahead, you know, you can let, you can let myself know, but also let the department head know that you're working with on the project so we can all be aware of it.
All right, thank you, Mr. Anderson. He's available if you need to talk to him. Or he's out of sight if you don't need to. Thank you. This is Wheatner. It's now 4:35, and it is time for a discussion on the 23, 2023 budget.
Good afternoon, everybody.
I can't see that. What are you talking about? I don't have. Shell, is that available to us so we can see it? Because I can't even see that screen.
Well, I.
Des Moines East.
We were trying not to make individual copies this year. Kelly thought maybe we didn't need to, so I don't have them, but I can email it out to you. These are the same, pretty much, well, little slightly different documents that we talked about a couple of weeks ago when we were talking about the maximum published levy. This first one is similar. We're looking at the general fund first. The only changes on here, and again, you, you should all have this available in, it was attached in Novus February 15th. It's also available on the finance webpage. So, the only change that's been made on here is I did update the debt service slightly. I gotta figure out how to. Yeah, we've updated the debt service slightly. So, our total levy on here, unfortunately, is now about $100,000, just under 75 cents. So, that's the total property tax levy. And I think I will switch to, we have another document that we've added that shows. This will show the changes that departments asked for. This does not include the personnel changes, except for a few things. So, changes that were required by the bargaining contracts or payroll taxes that changed because pay rates changed are not included in this. Total payroll changes this year are about 1.3 million. Then, we have the other types of expenses. And we can, we can go through each of these, but the totals, you can see we've had total expense increases of about, let's see, 1.4 million and revenue changes of about 6 million. So, you take that 1.3 plus this 1.4, subtract the six, and you get about, I think you're going to be at 3.6 million in total increases, which is what we're at. And I, as I said, I do have a few line item changes we can make to adjust those, but not, nothing that's going to get us down to a no increase. I mean, it takes a large amount even to get down to, to a 3% residential increase, which is a, that's just a number we often talk about. And I'll show you those rates again. We have looked at a worksheet already that's similar to this one. But the staff request level, including now debt service, that total increase is 3.65 million. Total increase in property taxes of 8.18 million, or percent, I'm sorry, can't talk. And total residential increase of 7.5. There are some line item changes I've been trying to work on, and it looks like that's about half a million. But those are just suggestions at this point. If we can do those, we can bring the total tax collections down to a 6.98% increase. Residential increase would be at 6.47. And then, I just gave you some examples of other things that we could consider. If, for example, if you want to get down to, let's say, just over 5% increase for residential, we'd have to do those line item increases that identified. Plus, we would need another 586,000, which is about a one and a half percent reduction from each department if you would choose to do it that way, each of the general fund departments. If you want to get down to, and actually, my heading's off here, so 4% increase in residential, we would have to cut $1 million. So, those are, I've got two number, two percents that are bad. Option five is a 4% increase, and option six is the 3% on here. I'll get a corrected one out on that. But that 3% is, we'd have, you're basically cutting 2 million, half a million that's identified, 1.5 that isn't. So, those are, that's basically what we've got to figure out how to do. And I mean, we have options. We can ask the departments to make adjustments. We can, we've talked about hiring delays. I have already used about 750,000 of fund balance in this. One other thing that we haven't discussed yet, we do have an extra payroll in fiscal '23, a 27th pay period. I have, for the general fund, been able to put some money aside for that. So, I don't, I'm not asking to increase taxes for that. I will, I'll be able to cover that with savings that we've already had in prior years. So, that makes it hard to add any more fund balance because I'm already taking about a million and a half general fund fund balance to do that. But that's an option. And so, those are just some of the ideas we have. Feedback that I need from all of you is where, you know, where you would like to land, what programs you're willing to adjust, or maybe none, I don't know. Those are, those are the kind of decisions we have to make now to set our budget for 2023.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Amos?
Michelle, so what I'm hearing here is I heard like 6.47 increase for residential. But if we start looking at taking away to lower that percentage as far as increase for taxes for the residents, realistically, isn't that looking at us cutting services as far as what the city provides?
Likely, yes. I mean, the only way it isn't is if we raid the piggy bank. And the issue with doing that is that compounds. So, if we, if let's say we use another million in fund balance this year, you have to use that next year. Plus, you've got to figure out how you're going to fund the increases for next year. So, it becomes difficult. And I hesitated. For example, there are some people that probably aren't using all their fuel budgets right now. I debated reducing those, but with what we're seeing happen with fuel prices right now, it's, it's very difficult to think about cutting that because if you can't use your vehicles.
Right, and the reason that I ask that is, is I know that in previous years, previous budgets, we've been able to pretty much hold the line on things to where they, we didn't see huge increases. But it's just a matter of what, for me, with the way times are and the way things are, it's just something that we're going to have to take a look at. And, you know, it's tough to do, but.
It is tough to do. I've looked at, you know, looked at the numbers a lot. People are not necessarily asking for huge increases. There are, of course, some. Most of them are external things that we, they're not necessarily under our control to change, to lower. So, that's what makes it tough.
So, we'll go to Mr. Childs and then Mr. Bozen, with just one quick comment. But you have to remember before we start, so, you know, last year, if we had any type of personnel delays, you know, that money, you start out fresh that next year. You have to figure out how to pay for it. And then, of course, we want to make sure that workers are rewarded with, you know, increases, whether it's three or two or whatever it is. So, that part needs to be paid for, for the next year, compounded on what they, what was earned last year. So, even before the year started, even before you get into cost of doing business, we already started in some areas because we, you know, move it, move it down the road. And I'm not saying, we're not the only city that may do that. But it leaves us in a position of continuously having, making tough decision, which is what budgets are. And they're also evaluation of your priorities. But, you know, so that's, that's where we're at. Tonight is just that max number. And then, over the course of this next week, Michelle and I and departments will continue having those tough discussions to bring back something to all of you. And I'll be reaching out to all of you within the next week or so, trying to get a feel of where you're at and what you would like to see. Mr. Childs?
If we decide to not move ahead and grant the requests that are necessary, are we simply kicking the bucket down the road again?
I think it depends on what things you choose to do. You know, the difficult thing about government, particularly the general fund, is it's primarily people. So, you know, honestly, there's ways of looking at that. Our gap is maybe 15 people. So, you know, a very untenable maybe solution would be to shrink that. But if you, you could do that permanently, which would help future budgets. But it's really difficult for us to offer service, you know, to continue services at the level they're at.
Well, I guess that's my, my point, is that in order to maintain or increase our ability to serve our citizens, it costs money. Yep. It's that simple. And we don't want to lose the services that we provide to our citizens.
That's what makes our budget a challenge.
Comparatively, if you take a look at the top 10 larger cities in the state, us being, Waterloo being one of them, overall staffing levels, we're second or third lowest amount of full-time employees. So, our folks are doing a tremendous job with what they're doing. And, you know, it just depends on, you know, as council members, you know, if you, say for instance, I don't want to use Paul, but, you know, you, you say, we're, you say, we're not going to, we're going to forego the timeframe in which we cut grass. You guys are going to get a call from people that are going to be upset. But if our, if our tax rate isn't in a, what the citizens, in the middle of something respectful for them to pay next year, you're going to get calls too. And so, it has an impact on one another. But, yeah, we got some, we got some work to do. We'll get it, we'll get it done, but we got some work to do. Mr. Bozen?
Two, two things, and they, they're not going to save us this year, okay? But I truly believe we need to have a work session on local option sales tax. And I, I would, I personally propose 30% of our local option sales tax go to property tax relief. And we'd have to get it on this election cycle coming up. Let the citizens decide because we can fix $10 million worth of roads, and people complain about the roads. I mean, we're not going to stop that, but other cities are using it. Dubuque's using 50% of their local option sales tax for property tax relief. Other cities are using it. You know, $3 million of local option sales tax going towards property tax relief would cut our levy $1.30. That's huge, number one. I mean, we just need to set our priorities. And the other thing, because I really would like a work session so that we could make a decision to move forward and let the, let the citizens decide, okay? And the other one is, as sticks in my craw, is the $1.3 million that we spend on dispatching fees for, for the 911. I mean, we're, with their increase this year, because we're spending close to $110,000 a month for dispatching. This should be a separate property tax levy that the county levies on to each and every person in Black Hawk County. I have the same risk of calling police, fire, and EMS as someone in La Porte City or someone in Hudson. And we should all pay the same to operate that dispatch center. And if we took that $1.3 million out of our, out of our tax levy, it would take 56 cents off the levy. So, those two things alone would take $1.86 off our tax levy. And I don't believe that out of the $1.3 million that the citizens of Waterloo are paying for that operation of that dispatch center, that if the county assessed each and every property in Black Hawk County the same for police, fire, and EMS dispatching, that it wouldn't add that much to our county taxes. They're already, our taxes are going to be stagnant in the county. I believe they're not having a tax increase for the county.
Right.
Although they got some, a lot of federal money that they're sitting on, and they don't pay for Country View anymore, which was, was a, was a, really a draw on their budget. So, I think this is the ideal time to work with the county. We've got an election coming up. We've got two new spots on the, on the Board of Supervisors that are going to open up to work towards something like this, to put a tax levy across the entire county. Save us $1.3 million out of our 810 levy. And then, if we decide as a council to move forward with putting local option sales tax on, on the ballot, to use a percentage, I just throw 30% out because I thought that was more acceptable than 50%. That, that's a huge savings to try to, next year, to try to buy down some of this debt that we're going to be experiencing and to keep our level of service and maintain the exact same level of service, if not better.
And I had a meeting with Supervisor Treoka as well, and I've talked to a couple of other mayors too, just about that conversation. So, when you think about it, it'll be timely for us. I would probably, you know, when we have conversations, maybe throw out 20% for the, for the portion of the local option to still make sure that we can continue move forward with our streets. But if you take in that 20%, which could be about $2 million, and then you take a look at the 1.3 that you mentioned, because we're also going to have to begin making some tough decisions next year. And nobody wants to have this conversations about about city facilities, right? So, it'll be a very timely conversation for us, and we'll need to take a look at other definite ways of increasing our, keeping some of our revenue here that's moving to operations and maintenance of our city facilities. Question, anyone? All right, so, next week or so, expect some type of call, so don't avoid the, avoid that call. All right. Thank you, thank you, Ms. Wheatner. And just note, this is, tonight is just setting the maximum levy, it's not the final. So, I know how that gets crossed up with regards to the way it's printed in media outlets. All right, next is Kelly Felkley, discussion of expanding the operating area for shared mobility devices, so.
All right, good afternoon, Mary and Kelly.
Nice bookcase.
All remember.
That's a delayed, delayed reaction. I said, I said nice bookcase, but it's.
Oh, hey.
It's your floor.
Okay, sorry about that. Good afternoon, everybody. As y'all remember, we implemented a shared mobility device program last summer in the city of Waterloo. I think for the most part, it went pretty darn well. This year, we have been approached about expanding the ride zone. How the ride zone works is, it's a specific area within the community that the scooters are allowed to operate within. There's geofencing that is applied to specific areas that only allows the scooters to operate within that, that location. Ride areas are supposed to be set by the city council. And if Jessica is there, I'll kind of turn it over to her to kind of give us a little bit more information about expanded ride zone.
Hello, Jessica from Main Street, Waterloo. Last year, when we launched the scooters, we were really focusing on. Um, last year, when we launched the scooters, we were really focusing on the attraction, and this is just something fun for everybody to do. There's more to the scooters, though, um, really looking at affordable, environmentally friendly transit, transit as an, uh, alternative, solving that last minute transportation problem that a lot of people run into, as well as connecting more residents to transit options. Um, it's also, they also provide increased access to businesses, museums, libraries, parks. Um, so really listening to the community and thinking about the full use of those scooters. Um, it was kind of brought to our attention, right now, the scooter ride zone ends on Franklin Street, and we have a neighborhood right next to it that's actually a little bit of is in the downtown district even, um, that could really benefit from having access to the scooters. So I apologize, I thought this map that I colored, um, with my highlighters was going to just be a conversation, not come in front of city council, I would have made it prettier. Um, but there's two options. There, that were, that have been suggested after conversations with Habitat for Humanity, um, some city staff, uh, and the different departments. And one of them is in the yellow green, and that would be expanding over to Dane Street, um, to bring the Walnut neighborhood into that ride zone as well. And then the blue one is going all the way over to Sullivan Park, um, to create that mobility and really connecting Sullivan Park to downtown, especially with the Veterans Way project that is under, in, underway and raising money for. Um, so really just looking for trying a little bit of an expansion to provide some transportation to an area that could really benefit from it.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Who would be responsible for organizing all of this? Is it still Main Street?
Um, we are helping determine the deployment locations, but I am working with both scooter companies to outside of downtown, where are they being utilized? Where, um, where are you seeing the most traffic? And how, having them help reach out to those, uh, those locations to see if they want to be deployment locations.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Who, how many people have approached you to, that, to expand this riding zone to go clear up to Dane or to Newell?
Um, the Dane, uh, the, the Dane one, probably, it sounds like not many, but I would say at least 10 people have expressed that this would be really good in that Walnut neighborhood. Um, the, the larger expansion was probably only like two or three people, but it was really looking at that connectivity and why we wanted to bring it to the city staff and, um, city council to decide what the best option is.
And I, I just had a quick question, follow up with Kelly. And how much have we received from our share of the percentage that we're going, that, that this contract we had with the two scooter companies? I, I believe we're supposed to get a small percentage, is that correct?
Yeah, for each ride completed, we're supposed to get 5 cents. Um, both companies have paid their fees, and I will look that up and get that to council. We had a pretty good, I would say we had a pretty good, uh, amount of rides. I want to say it's about 11,000 rides last summer.
Okay.
But I'll get that information for sure and send that out to council.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I just want to go on record and say, me and my friends probably took up most of those rides. We, let me tell you, we enjoyed those scooters to the fullest this summer. Like, it was the best thing that could have ever happened. And so, yeah, we, we should, I was pretty sad that we couldn't cross over to East Fourth Street because I did try. Um, so I, I think the expansion, I think the expansion would be a good idea and definitely support these scooters. That, that's a great time for Waterloo. Had a blast.
For constituents, of course.
Yes, yes, not for me, not for me, for everyone else.
Mr. Mayor? And then he puts shocks on there though, because.
The bumps are a little rough, yeah.
Um, Jessica or Kelly, have we had, um, and I like them, I think they're, I think they're fun. My only concern is that the full expansion goes over a railroad crossing. Have we had conversations with the companies about what additional safety features? Because if people are willing to see if they can race a train with a car, I would hate to see them try and race it with a scooter because a train will definitely beat a scooter. Um, so have we had those conversations or are we still in the very preliminary stages on this expansion?
I would say, I mean, on my end, probably still preliminary, um, conversations. I know that when this was proposed, I said to the city staff, not necessarily to the scooter companies, that anything near those railroad tracks are going to have to be a no-ride zone, so you might have to get off and walk it across. Um, but that is definitely something that we're all taking into consideration as we look at what the expansion might be.
Perfect.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
So that goes the same, so like, we, like, Lincoln Park is right in the middle of that area, and as soon as you get your scooter into it, it drops to like one mile per hour quickly. And so if you could do the same thing for that railroad area and walk it over and then be able to kickstart it again, that, that would be nice.
And now you, uh, it'll be a good question too, to find out, because we can't be the only place, uh, with railroad tracks, maybe. But, uh, may, may be good to figure out what type of best practices, uh, they have as well, and what they've done in other cities to kind of let us know too, so we can make sure we have the incredible safety standards, but also, uh, figure out what people have done.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
But that also, is Randy, but that also require additional work on, on your department? Because if we expand this zone, we, we, we're going to want to be, the street department's going to really be involved in this.
All right, anything else? Anyone? All right, we got a little excitement.
I, I would add quickly that, um, April 1st, there will be a safety event to launch the scooters for 2022, so teaching people how to safely use, ride, park the scooters.
You're not going to trick anybody, are you?
Well.
I don't think so. That's not our plan right now.
Will that event be recorded or broadcast for the general public to be able to see it as well? I'm asking for a friend.
Um, we can probably coordinate something.
Yeah, I was just thinking with the whole.
Don't look at me.
Okay, so, okay, so no more camera video. Okay. All right. All right, I'll remember that. All right, thank you. All right, motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion being made with second. All in favor?
Aye.